...five years and that job's worth about a million. So, it was ten grand. And he could do that, turn everything, come see me, turn everything in. And I took it over till we can get him a new station chief out there. Another thing fixing to happen, I requested an ISO review for Lakeland County because our district shrank somehow with all the new rules, regulations. Some of the fire districts, I noticed, now it's stocked. It was one of the main areas. They got my attention, Mr. Bennett's house down there, Neil Bennett, his insurance company called and they had him out of district and he was only three miles from the station. And I probably had to type him up a letter and send it to him. And so I said, you know, best thing to do is get down here and let's review all this. And what we're probably gonna do, I talked to the guy briefly, we're probably gonna just pull all the batteries. He said, "Ben, we're gonna solidate the fire department, best thing to do is to pull all the batteries. Do you have any batteries for the fire department? The fire department's kind of terrified." And I said, "That's making us way to do it. We don't have..." And he answered, "We're talking about some twenty-eight. We're trying to get into ISO to, you know, lower the rate. The city are probably getting lower than the rate, county, you know, probably hanging there at nine. You never, ever get to the county. I'm not there." But I reported on that next meeting, I hope it goes well. The new station, if it hadn't been down there, the outside is complete, doors up, it's locked. I've done talk to Slash Pine, Clipper Cam, and we went and looked at it and got it set up for service. As far as I know, myself and the firemen, we're doing the work on it, finishing it up. And also, the Lakeland Fire Department will be funding the interior work with their own money, sponging raise your money that we get when we do boot drives and stuff like that. So, we'll be, we'll be funding the interior of it, which will be the finish of the walls, insulation, and electrical. So, and do the work. So, we can go do our part of trying to get that station up and running. As far as the truck, I'm gonna go to the leading market in the city and try to get them to help fund the truck first. What I wanna do is try to get a newer truck put in the Lakeland station and then move one of the older trucks out to the new station. Because it's not gonna get a lot of run out there. And I'd like to have a newer truck in town that would get us further down the road before we'd ever need another truck. So, I'm gonna go to the market, if they'll put half the bill, then we can buy a newer model. The used trucks I'm finding, if they're in the mid-eighties, you can get a mid-eighties models truck for ten thousand dollars. But, the life expectancy of fire trucks, thirty-five years. So, you don't get a whole lot of time left on a, on a mid-eighties truck. If you can move it to the nineties, the price goes up pretty, pretty steep when you jump from the eighties to the nineties. Like, a mid-nineties truck is around forty-five thousand. So, that's what I'm shooting for, is try to get a mid-nineties truck. That'd give us a good fifteen years. Good truck for fifty-fifteen years. So, I'm gonna try to do that. And I'm having two signs made. I've already got the new station down there and I'm redoing a new sign for the, for the station in town. Being the new station is still in Lakeland District. It's just gonna be a station two. So, actually, the station in town is called Lakeland Near Fire Rescue. So, the one that's out there that would be now Lakeland Near Fire Rescue Station One, Lakeland Near Fire Rescue Station Two. So, that's the way, the two signs are being made to put up on that. And the fire department, of course, is paying for the signs too. So, that's about it. Unless you got any questions, about anything else.
Well, just on the, I know the station, thank you for all the work and, and the donations that Philip and Jesse Connel have done as far as helping to get that bill. They also mentioned they may be willing to help us with another one if we talk to them. You maybe had identified another area that was in sort of the same situation?
Yeah, duh. I guess, if you went by, I'd have to check it to see who it would help the most. I've got two areas, so we'd need to do what has helped the most.
Right, of course.
Now, my guess, that's gonna be out Unity, out that way. Because everything from Unity Church forward, everybody on Chris School Road and everybody on Little Curry, a lot of new houses and their stuff, none of that's in our area anymore. It's all in the ten range. So...
Yeah, and it may be something-
And I was hoping the nine-one-one center was gonna put up something.
Well, yeah.
Would help all three counties.
Well, we need to, that'd be a good time to talk before we jump out there and say yes or no.
Well, they did. I heard rumors from the nine-one-one center, they were saying about putting a fire in the EMS station, which would help clinch access and get us off. And that would be, I think, you know, but I don't know what's going on with that.
But how far would that come back toward town? Did that come already?
Well, they would keep everybody coming back. They would, should push it back to Unity Church. I would think, five miles. I hadn't measured it. I don't think it's more than five miles in the unity to the center. I don't think it is. We'd have to measure, make sure.
Anyway, it may be something that we shoot for later on in New York. I don't know.
Well, I mean, if not, we could still put another station. I'm sure we find somebody, donate some land out there around Unity somewhere.
Yeah, I was planning to start working on that. And then, so...
That would push it all the way out, you know, get everybody in that area. And then, all the place left is, I think, around the Lovejoy area, back up in that way. So, there's, there's kind of a gap between Lovejoy Road and the Next Road and over. You just have to go drive it. I mean, it's, you know, it's five road miles, so you have to go and drive it and see where your cutoffs are, you know.
Well, we'll just try to keep working on getting everybody covered.
Yeah, we'll, we just keep, there's the money in life, so we just keep moving forward. That's all we're getting.
All right. Anybody got any questions? Bob, you want to give us an update on the road department?
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Basically, we're just, job's going along as usual. This year we've had a rain here the last one, three weeks. We've probably worked four to six things in the county. We've got issues on the ditches, but we can't do anything with those for the four years out here and the subsides. We've got some pipes we've got to put in, I've got some dirt I've got to haul, and just got to draw before you do anything with it. Also, we have issue with people stealing these road signs. We've got to replace several of those and I've got to get some more. I don't know what to do with them. I think, I guess I see that aluminum, I've heard it's like a number one grade aluminum. And they're just taking these road signs and stop signs and they're taking, tearing them down. I've had a couple of people, brought them too, where they come in woods, stop signs. But the road signs, seven of these are roads, they're just taking them, bending back to the brake. And I guess they use aluminum for self-recycling, don't they, and it's...
How many have they taken?
I've replaced seven, about two weeks ago. And some have been the same ones. I got one on Todd Road, this is the same one, third one, Creasy Coonan Road twice. Been just different areas in the county.
Bob, then we're on the, out there on Bolt Stockton Turb Road where the paving was put in. There's a, I've been to that, there's a couple of signs there that's been pushed over. Have you noticed any?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get your, okay.
I'm gonna just go back, here on the fire, when we do get the one down there finished and, or do hope, we certainly won't have a little occasion to thank everybody that's done that and, you know, whatever, the ribbon cutting or something.
Also, I, should get them up?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to move forward on the truck quick as I can, because I can go ahead and get the truck in tomorrow and then call the state. Because it's gonna take them a couple of weeks to get back down here and certify that truck. So, even if the building's not finished, the truck can be in it and get it certified and try to, you know, move forward on that. So, I'll be moving on the truck quicker than, if it's all right.
A lot of work going in down there and volunteers and...
Right. I'm gonna keep all rolling while I was rolling and I'm checking, I'm gonna have Donna check my budget, make sure I've got monies that'll, that'll do for the truck, you know. I hope we're standing exactly there. But I'm gonna move on the truck. I may have a new truck before the next meeting. I'll just let y'all know. Move forward.
I just may not want to let everybody know, we want to do that and everybody here knows that.
Yeah, we get it all up-
But expect that one day we'll have a-
We have a big thoroughfare, pick on the ground.
There you go. All right. Randy, you want to, you need to make the call?
Yes, we had an extremely busy month for December, a hundred and twenty-nine calls. We actually transported a hundred and three. I think that's pretty close to a record for us. Sixty-five of them were in Lakeland, were all in Cedarville, fifteen in Mud Creek, fifteen in West Side, out in Stockton. We actually went and assisted other counties six times, and other counties assisted us four. And the state started enforcing a law that's been in the books forever, to where EMS has to function twenty-four hours a day, Saturdays week. We have another EMS in Lakeland. And that law, they are abiding by it. So, we have an extra truck in Lakeland twenty-four hours a day now. We have used them this one, about five times. So, a mutual aid issue, we still need to be working on a permanent cure, but we do have a mandate on it right now. So, it's, it's nice. They're not have to stay in the county. They do a lot of outside transports. That's the nature of their business. They do races and do standbys and things, you know, they get paid to, to, to do that kind of stuff. But when they are not at a race or not at a standby, they do have a truck staffed in Lander County twenty-four hours. That's, that's helpful.
How many, how many of those cars usually went to Ballast?
The ones that we just did, seventy-six.
Went to South Door?
Yes. Twenty came to Lakeland and the rest were scattered out through area hospitals. We carried seventeen people from our hospital straight to S T M C for transfers. If you come to us, it's a little more of what we can handle than transferred by last day. We did that seventeen times. We brought ten people from other hospitals to Lakeland for rehab or for, not quite ready to go home yet, and things like that.
Are you still looking for a truck? Yeah, we're going to try to do some more swapping out with the fire department?
Yes, sir. The bids that we were trying to get to remount our oldest truck, I still need to get another bid from the companies, I have the three bids. And once we get the three bids and we approve them, I don't know if we've got that in this year's budget, or, I mean, that's, that's up to you whether we do it this year or wait till June. But once we do, then I'll take that truck and give it to Derry and they'll make a quick swap truck out of it.
The reason I ask, I noticed a couple of two thousand eight, my ambulance is always set up on the General Services Administration website and they'll look at it and see what's thought about it. The, the work, the bids were not too high, only that the time I looked at it, you know, those are flawed.
Nothing else, we could, could use those for rescue trucks.
They were, in front of the pictures, it's nicely constructed, had, connected to me mouth on, over diesel, so, I'll have to take a look at it.
You got one with that?
Oh, is it, you have a date?
Look at the trucks. I, I want, I want to make sure somebody with those vehicles can look at them and say that we're spending money and getting-
But wasn't, where they were, it was not real close, but, you know, there's nothing I want to-
You know, it doesn't take brand new, like we have-
Yeah, but we took the old eight models and they look good, they were fairly low mileage, so, you might want to look at them.
On the EMA side, I heard the word flu mentioned a few minutes ago. The courthouse and all the county businesses and buildings and everything, if you could make sure that simple things like soap for the restroom's in there. And we carry hand sanitizers with us. You can shake somebody's hand, you don't want to be rude and not shake their hand. As soon as you shake their hand, it comes through the city and walk away. When we have people dying right here, there's someone by Austin that's been one in Nashville, and it's, it's not a cure all. But it is good to know when you're on a restroom, there's soap in there and things like that. I'm not saying there's not, or hasn't been. That's just some things that we try to throw out to people all over, you know, make sure hand washing is the number one way to prevent the cure, I mean, to prevent the flu. When you get a group of people together, I'm breathing, but you're breathing, you know, there's no hundred percent, even if you have blue shot, which we all have to have. But it's, it's just something to take care of our folks with, with all of this and that.
Certainly check on that, make sure we're not lacking in that area.
Well, you know, I was wondering that just-
No, 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 I know.
It's just that sometimes you don't think about things like that, and by no means am I saying that-
No, no.
-folks haven't been doing it, so I don't know if I'll go to the courthouse or go to the hospital.
What we'll do, Randy, we can outstanding that reference, we put a little fire up. You know, there was always says about flu season, make sure you wash hands for twenty seconds or whatever, all that stuff, you know. I'll put a little, you know, in all the room, especially with mine, it's a good thing.
You might, Randy? All right, Mr. Norwood on Park and Recreation?
Good morning, brother. My activity for December at Recreation Department included, finished restoring for basketball conditioning and basketball practice, and began preparing for a bit of the spring season. At December, we saw a lot of vandalism down at the park. We had a van broken out, the window broken out on the van and the concession stand was damaged heavily. And we're also currently waiting on some bids to refurbish a stolen gator that we cut.
The gator, you just say you're looking at getting it fixed or to replace it, whichever of that?
We, we're looking at getting refurbished, getting fixed, moving forward. We should have the figures on that in a few days.
They catch the guys, our folks that did it and...
The Chief Watson, when we first talked, when he, when he first found it, he knew who it was, but he was going through his proper challenge already. We talked about it, but, you know, the rest haven't been made at this time.
All right. Goodbye, Randy. Okay. Is there anybody else here on that, Family Connections?
Good morning. Just want to give y'all two flyers with some events we have. This one, the first one, on the twenty-eighth, the Family Connection meeting, we're gonna have Kim White here. She's the UGA navigator for Southwest Georgia. Basically, and Rachel tell me if I, if I get any of this wrong, UGA had a grant to, and hired someone that actually helps you understand the Affordable Care Act, or at least any questions that you may have about it. She is not here.
Excuse me, where did they hire that person, Nicole? I have never heard of anybody in the United States of America that understands the act.
Well...
This was Kim and Obama.
She, that, and that's the other thing I was gonna get to. This will not, this is not like a political in any way. All she is here to, all she will be here to do is if someone wants to, this flyer that you have is she will be here at this office to help anybody who wants to go through the, um, process of applying. When she comes to the Family Connection meeting, all she's going to do is tell you what her job is and what she could offer, any businesses or individuals in the community. That's basically all, because that's all we do with Family Connection, is connect these people to, um, different agencies. So, if any of you want to come to the meeting, that's at twelve o'clock, and we'll be serving lunch that day. So, if you do come, I would need, um, you to let me know so we can have lunch for you. But if you want, um, I don't know if y'all want to put this up anywhere, it is good information for families that may want to come and speak to her. And yes, bless her heart for her job, because she has been giving her rather hard time. It's not a job I want. The, um, the second one is-
I have the folders. Um, they have our own expenditures, we're showing at forty-four point sixty-three, we can be a fifth of the end of our six lines, we can be a fifty percent less, so we're still showing a little under. Our splash budget is at forty-five point forty-six. So, as far as I'm actually looking, we'll do a thing, we'll hopefully, you know.
Any questions? All right, you guys, up there on June House?
Yes, sir. Um, we received the letters from Mr. Dickler and our DA's, and this is just to give a board an update. Um, he's saying that as of January two thousand fourteen, um, there's gonna change, uh, to the most impactful these changes for their offices over our county, um, is that the, currently the Department of Judiciary Justice receives reports and notices that it seems that now the job's gonna go to the DA's office. And they're stating that, um, they may need to have additional staff to do this, since they're giving it to the end of the day. And they're just giving board a notice, letting them know that there may be some additional costs for that, maybe this, or there should be a copy of the folder that you're gonna be doing, pretty bad.
Yeah, I think, uh, District Attorney Perry was not saying it will happen, he's saying it could later on, you know, in, in most counties getting budget for that cost for at least two, three months, so, you know. Tell us, he hopes he doesn't have to ask, but he might have to ask for some financial due.
He said that, I believe that he, if the DA's office doesn't take it, then it's gonna fall on the county, just to hire someone to do it soon.
Maybe they can handle it. I don't know what you bring up to worry about. Administrator Tony Collins, you got a couple hours, you go with us?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just want to remind you, executive, um, Chambers holding their annual banquet Thursday. County does have a table, so, I'm not sure about the town, escapes me right now, but anyways, it's Thursday evening. And, uh, we did have to order in the grand jury room, we just had a court a couple of weeks ago, and we had issues with the heat in, the heat at the time. And that unit up there, rooftop unit, uh, basically was patched a couple of years ago to get a couple more years out of it, but it's pretty much seen its useful life. And so, we did have to order a replacement unit for that, right at sixty-three thousand dollars, so, labor and unit, so, that should be in place this week. And then, just for informational purposes, for the, for the year two thousand thirteen, for new home permits, the county issued twenty-five new home permits for the year at a value of two point two million. And then, we have to report them back to the HUD and census, just as they get a, idea of new homes permits, so I'll have to be some good information. Uh, that is pretty much all the general information. Second item there is, would ask y'all, declaration of surplus property. The county owns jointly with the city, uh, property located at sixteen North Bradley Street, which I think is the old lunchroom building that had previously been used by the, I think the L L, or, city, and they did away with that program, so that building's been vacant. And we have been approached, and I think also the city's been approached, at what we were gonna do with the property. And, you know, property is, if it goes unoccupied, it just goes down in a hurry. So, I would, uh, it's, uh, you know, it's a pretty good building, it's gonna need some upgrades as, you know, if somebody comes in and uses it, but it's a four thousand square foot building. But I would ask, you know, recommendation to, to the county to declare it surplus, try to dispose of it.
Yeah, I think we've had a couple of folks stop by and, and want, want to make an offer on the building. I think they approached the city about it as well, so, it's probably the right thing. And we own it together, so, it's not like, it don't seem to be able to, be agree on finding a common use for the building, so...
Right. And it would take some improvements, um, you know, whoever gets it, or if the city or the county decided to do something with it. But do see that since somebody's approached us, you know, rather than just having it there, instead of to, to get it back on the text, I would say.
I just, I think there were a couple of folks that inquired about it anyway, so, it's a good one. Do we have any kind of appraisal on it?
Uh, we do have a, a previous appraisal that was done a couple of years back, so we have, you know, a lot of our figures, looking at what we got in there and what the value of the building is. And the matter of disposal would determine that if we give it to you.
And if by do it, it doesn't mean it's gotta be sold, we just give a stock ten to dispose of it, you know, if we don't, ultimately, hold on to it.
Ma'am, say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, as a county officer and all our records, you know, we need, if we had a records location, I mean, something that we can put our records in and keep them and be secure and safe and fireproof or something. They're just, what we doing now, we're all just, we're all filled with a brand right now on space. I'm going through my stuff now, trying to get rid of some old traffic citations and stuff like that to, to make room for more records. So, you know, we need to look at, I mean, something that we need to look at, the county officers and county commissioners, something, maybe hold a workshop one day or something between all of us to try to come up with a solution to our records problem.
And, you know, we-
I've been preaching this several years, but like, I'm preaching the wrong place. I'm preaching to the right place today.
Well...
I'm letting my concern be known by y'all.
Do you bring any money to help build that?
No, they, maybe there could be some out there we can look for.
That's been the biggest holdup, but, we, we, and, you know, there've been several in the past, in previous negotiations, only these buildings we're talking about, or at least this building, or the other one, that maybe some of records placed could be built and swapped out or something, but, I mean, we're definitely more trying to help improve that situation, but money always comes up to be an issue, but sometimes you just have to go ahead and do things. And we probably are at that point, uh, that we need to-
In the big forehouse or something.
Yeah.
That's what Mark Spitz and that would be, a record room somewhere.
And we've got this backend out here too, that we could, you know, maybe come out here and fireproof in this building and make the rest of it out of it. That's probably the most obvious choice.
Is that what has to be done, has to be bought to fireproof all of it?
No, it don't have to be bought, but I think it has to be, uh, uh, there's some guidelines on it, so we'll just have to check up, get the, get the law on it, but we just need a better place and, I mean, right now, my traffic citations are not in the vault, because ain't no way you can put them in a vault. My vault is not being had.
What's the, uh, year of retention?
I think, I, well, I've gotten since I've been there, so it's something that I'm fixing to start going through.
Let me, what's, what's the law?
Uh, ten years maybe, seven, it's six, ten years it's called. If you scan them, you can get rid of them sooner, if they're scanned and digitized, you can get through them, I think, after six years.
Are you able to do that?
No, I don't have the, no, I've never done that.
Scan? That may be a-
I just thought, you know, our county was smaller than, the cost of doing all that, I didn't think that weighed the, uh, the expense of it, but it's something we can look at too.
I don't think scanners do that much, but I think, like you said, the work session sounds good.
I mean, the process, they getting a new program for that, uh, that was proved in last year's budget, about scanning documents and things like that, so, it's something I'm looking at, trying to redo some. But, you know, you know, rig records, it's harder to get it, do away with.
Is that like microfilm?
Sometimes. Anything that's got a criminal on the back, or, anything that you fingerprinted, fingerprintable fish, you know, I feel like we'd keep those, but anything that's been taken-
I mean, of course, a scanned document, though, is legal, I mean, it's, sure, it's a lot easier to keep records of that, especially if it's a seven-year limit. I mean, if you got three or four years' worth of documents that are not needed, that'd certainly be ones we could dispose of, I would think, you know. Anyway, I think the work session, if you, it would tell you, they glad to have one, and try to, you know, come up with a resolution. Especially if it's a seven-year limit. I mean, if you got three or four years worth of documents that are not needed, that certainly be ones we can dispose of, I would think. Anyway, what, I think the work session, if you, you told me, they glad to have one. And try to, you know, come up with a resolution.
Be adding personnel that would, that would do that. That might be a problem.
Well, we're working on that, but we've been working a, we started on last week or two, trying to get rid of some of our stuff. But, but you just, once you, once it's shredded, it's gone for good. You know, get it back to you and make sure that what you get rid of was in the law. But that's some of our stuff for apartment records.
All right, uh, a motion to declare the North Bradley Street building, uh, surplus.
With the agreement of the county, our decision.
Yeah, we just, we would declare our half surplus and they declare their half.
Correct.
Motion on that.
I make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Uh, okay. I, I don't know anything on executive session either, do you? Okay, uh, the whole business, uh, I think there's some qualifying fees, uh, that we need to approve, is that right?
Yes, you have to run that ad, add in the paper by the first of February for the upcoming election year. And I had Tony prepare that.
There's a sheet in your folder that shows the qualifying fees and, and forward dates and, uh, I mean, this. I know it'd be moving it up quick, but we wanted to have two elections instead of.
Well, that's, they changed the federal, the federal calendar this year. Uh, we've never had a, a lech, congressional election or senator's race, uh, in a special federal election day. They changed it to May the twentieth. And our, our primaries normally in July, and normally we have the, those races in July with, you know, coincide the same election. But they moved it to May the twentieth. And so, Jason tells me they're gonna try to introduce local, introduce legislation early, uh, in the session to get it changed to, the, our primary change the same time as the federal election.
So, they, they're looking at changing it?
They're changing it, so if it is the, the qualifying dates that I put on there, it could, it could very well change.
So, right now, you've got qualifying dates, April twenty-eighth through May second.
That's what, if it stays the same, that's the date, that's the week that they qualify, the law don't change. And the other one, I think the other date.
Qualified March third is the federal.
Yeah, that, we, we probably coincided about the same time, but I'm thinking if they get it done.
But that's, that's gonna be a pretty big expense to us if we have to.
Well, it, it involves about five, six thousand dollars, I think, to run a.
Secration.
Securation, but it planned for it, though. With three weeks of early voting, that's, when it reduced to three weeks early voting, it had the cost on elections.
All right, then, uh, motion on the qualifying fee in the general election.
Make the motion.
I don't think any more discussion to have on this, are all in favor? Uh, okay. All right, then also, I think, uh, Judge Mullis asked us to look at, uh, making, uh, probate judge Ron Parsons, uh, office. Did you give us a resolution, or was it, what was it?
Resolution.
Resolution. I got it right here. Well, it says, uh, whereas the offices of probate court judges in near county should be fair, impartial, unbiased, and not have any political party affiliation. Whereas the office of, uh, probate judge in near county serves as judge of the probate court judges, chief judge of magistrate court, traffic court judge, and election superintendent, and should act fairly, impartially, unbiased, and not have any political affiliation. Whereas at the present time, any candidate seeking the office or elected, after they have designated himself or herself as Republican, Democrat, or Independent. Whereas it would be in the best interest of the near county and the candidates for the probate court judges to run the nonpartisan election in the future. Therefore, it is resolved and respectfully requested representative Jason Shaw introduce appropriate legislation to provide for nonpartisan nomination and election of the judge of the probate, the judge of the probate court in near county, to provide for the requirements and procedures of nonpartisan nomination and election, to provide, uh, for other matters of, of foregoing, to provide for the authority for this act, to repeal conflicting laws and for other purposes, all pursuant to OCGA twenty-one dash two dash thirty. And, uh, anyway, you, uh, Judge Judy's asked us to, uh, consider this, and, uh, I did, I talked to Jay from the wood, and he, he, he supports it and thinks it's a good idea, so.
My Democrat Party supports it, too. I got a letter from them supporting it, and, uh, and I also talked to Brian, the Republican Party, and I didn't have a problem with it.
I also contacted both the Chairman of Democratic Republican Party, too, and I thought we talked the same thing, but they had no objection.
And I also talked, Paul's not here, but I personally talked to Paul, and he, he didn't have a problem with it either.
Want to make a motion to, but we have, we have given our own this resolution, we adopted it, and we, we don't have to do anything with resolution. That's all.
Make the motion.
No, it's our second.
Our second.
Uh, all in favor? All right, Judge, you got it?
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, what else we got here? Okay, I think several meetings ago, uh, the next item up is the firearm discharge ordinance. And it just happens, we had a gentleman from Banks Lake Point, I think, or somewhere, that came in had concerns about the firearm, discharge of firearms in subdivision and this and that. We, they kicked around the idea of, of looking at a, a resolution to, or an ordinance to try to help the sheriff if he was called out to these situations, but, um, frankly, I mean, I just, I've had a lot of call out to people that, that don't think it's a good idea. And, uh, you know, I, I certainly don't think, I know we're not ready to take action today. And, um, I don't know, it may be something we wanna just have a public, not, maybe to educate people as much about, you know, what they should and shouldn't do, and maybe ask the sheriff to come and, and give us his feelings and views on what might help, if anything, with him and doing his job. But certainly today, not in the near future, I don't think I'm comfortable taking action on any ordinance of this nature, um, without further, I guess, input from many people and, and certainly the sheriff. So, um, we don't wanna hinder him anyway from doing his job, but we also don't wanna pass something that maybe not, isn't necessary either, you know? There's enough laws on the books without us passing another ordinance that tries to help enforce the laws. But that might be about it, and I know, uh, anybody else, if you've got any thoughts or questions on the firearm revolution.
I think, I'm not really comfortable with that.
You know, I mean, it, it don't really matter how you tweak it or change it, it still, there's things in there that, you know, we're a rural county and, and, and got lots of, of folks that own guns, ant hunters, and, you know, it's just no need to, no need to, yeah.
I heard about this incident happening, and, uh, I was trying to think of any instance where people have been shot accidentally. You know, with somebody discharging a weapon, target practice or whatever in the near county. And I talked to a few people, and nobody can really think of one that was significant, um, or anybody being shot at all by somebody target practicing or whatever. Now, as far as the sheriff, um, saying that, you know, he couldn't do anything about this stuff, well, there're plenty of laws on the books, and I think you can, would tell you, I mean, that he, he could write them for, you know, endangering the public, or disturbing peace, or whatever he wants to, being sheriff. As you know, the sheriff has a lot of power in the county. And, uh, I just don't see any need for an ordinance like this either. And I think there've been many other people that, that have concerns about this. You know, I write to bear arms is very sacred to all of us. And, uh, I think, uh, my cousin is from Maryland, they started, uh, Maryland, the state of Maryland, started with some ordinances like this for subdivisions, and next thing you know, you can't hardly fire a gun in Maryland.
And what they would do is they would get to drinking, and they would start shooting. Whereas you would have nine to fifteen calls come in about these people shooting from ten to three or four in the morning, and at one certain time, a bomb was discharged. And when the sheriff was called, nothing was done. And that's what got us to this point.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna go talk to the sheriff personally about this, because I don't, uh, I, I don't, I mean, if somebody gonna get drunk and shoot off firearms, they gonna get drunk and shoot off firearms. That doesn't have anything to do with people target practicing with twenty-twos and their, you know, on a, like where, where we live, where we got thirty-five, forty acres or whatever. Now, there are houses that mean a thousand or fifteen hundred feet or whatever this ordinance supposed to be. And if I had to go tell Beth David Berry Hill and, and, uh, and the folks next door, and Bobby Rice and everybody else that I was gonna practice my twenty-two, uh, or if it was illegal, I don't think anybody here wants that. I mean.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a very touchy subject with guns. I mean, people in the South, we love our guns, we want our guns, we don't want to be told we can't shoot anywhere. And I really think this could've been resolved long before.
I do, too, and I think that the sheriff, uh, should be able to resolve this without putting y'all to this point and making y'all have to try to deal with his job, basically. And there's plenty of law that he could use.
The homeowner association, if, I, I don't think they're active right now. I think if, if they were an active organization for that subdivision, this wouldn't be before us either. So, it's kinda, you know, there's several reasons why it's falling on us, and, and, uh, there's other ways to solve the problem than, than adopting, you know, ordinance like this.
Y'all plan on just tabling this for now?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go sit and drink with it.
Let's see. I guess, do we actually need to table it or just move on?
I haven't even written.
I, yeah, yeah.
Go with table the discussion.
Can I add one note to this?
Sure.
I was in Maryland, I'm the cousin I was talking about. Uh, I was in Maryland many years ago when this very issue came up. It has changed over the years to literally, if you discharge, a person comes in your house with an axe and you shoot them, the state's attorney in Maryland is coming to arrest you for having fired or discharged a firearm where you're not supposed to. It is one of the reasons that I have packed my balloon and I'm coming home.
At this time, I, I don't think anybody here is comfortable, you know, with, with moving forward, just. But we did wanna at least entertain and let, you know, let the public speak on, on the issue. And it's been, I guess, October, November, probably, since we started the discussions again.
And like I said, not interrupting Mr. Chairman, but where it stemmed from was just, it was really not target practice, it was reckless gunfire. And that was inside that subdivision, right in the middle of, you know, kids and everybody else involved. Although nobody was, was harmed in any way, there was just some, some concerns from the HOA there that we need some, need something to hold them responsible for, hey, you're not supposed to do this. And instead of, you know, the law saying, well, they can shoot their guns if they want to.
What has appeared to be effective there is that you address high-density areas. And, and, and so, I mean, that is the issue. We have a high, a high-density area where somebody's firing firearms. We have to approach it as high-density areas in the rest of the county, because it doesn't really, it affects none of the rest of us except that little area. You know what I mean? Yes, and the county sheriff, and, but it's that little area that's being affected, not the rest of us. Nobody here is trying to, you know, I mean, none of us go out and, you know, I was trained and was, you know, to shoot and be safe while you're doing it, like being, you know, teacher, teacher, the same, right? Can't do that in Maryland.
I went to the HOA meeting after all this had happened, and, and how, from what the citizens there said was when the sheriff was called, the sheriff told them that if they wanna shoot their guns, they can shoot their guns. Although it was reckless gunfire, two, three in the morning, they was told by their sheriff, they wanna shoot guns, they can shoot guns. Now, in their bylaws, they have stuff written in their bylaws. But if the sheriff don't enforce it, then it's, it don't hold any water. And that's why he came to us trying to get something that could hold water.
That's correct, lots of ways to do it without, you know.
But it could've been, it could've been resolved that, that.
Disturbing the peace or, you know.
Reckless endangerment.
Reckless endangerment of public. I mean, and I'm gonna go talk to Nick and myself and tell them, I don't give a damn what you got going on with the county commission. You know, we don't need this.
You know, and just, you know, let, you know, we definitely support, you know, the owner and that stuff. Commissioner Green had, had been working on the NRA, trying to actually maybe get a rifle range or something here. But we haven't gotten anywhere with that, because you gotta have land first. But maybe I think Mr. Kelly brought it up, too, that it was, that kinda got what it's got, that started about those discussions. And, you know, we, we would definitely love to, or I would, it's like, see, we would try to, and, and think, we would try to do something like that. So, you know, any of y'all wanna try to help us make something like that happen, you know, help us, show us, and, you know, we'll try to, you know, we'd love to try to do something like that. And then you could do a better job of educating your youth and, and teaching them gun safety, which is much more, uh, important probably than trying to outlaw them.
I tell you what else, too, now, the, uh, the base commander, he is, I mean, they don't, they don't tolerate stuff like that from their people. So, I think if y'all got in touch, if y'all got their names and got in touch with the base commander, I doubt you gonna have a problem out of those two individuals again.
After the bomb incident, there was a team sent out, because the bomb was taken from the base. So, this started about, about a year and a half ago, and it led up to the bomb incident. And I think since then, and all of this, it started in between that. So, that's why it's kinda gotten to the point where it's at.
I think maybe it led up to the base commander, though, for mechanic ministers. The base said, you know, these individuals were involved in this type of activity, and, uh, we would like to ask if you could help us get the military member to refrain from such activity in the future. And I believe, uh, that would probably stop the problem.
See, that's first doing it, where it should've been the sheriff.
I understand that, but I understand that, and I'm gonna go talk to him myself about that. Suzanne, from a legal standpoint, what's your, what's your take on this?
I don't think the county can write that letter. I think it'd have to be the homeowner association or a neighbor or someone like that.
That's what I was wondering.
And Don French, the, the president of the homeowner association, did contact the base commander. I mean, he, 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 this was really his last, I guess, ditch effort to try to get something done. I don't even know if individuals still live out there, but like I said, when all this started, it was a, uh, not a nightly event, but probably Thursday, Friday, Saturday, it was happening pretty regularly. And it wasn't necessarily him, it was just people inside the community that was, you know, I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with Banks Lake Point. If you shoot a gun across the neighborhood, you're gonna hear, you know, whether it be the street over or how far. I guess what he was just trying to do, his part as president to, 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 I guess, put an end to it.
Right, and I can understand that.
Can you restrict that ordinance to just cover subdivisions?
Like he said, high density, I think some of we looking at was written out that way. I mean, you hate to enforce anything, or, I mean, really. You hate to stall.
Really, the only problem is in subdivision, like he said, he's got plenty of land to shoot a gun on. Subdivision, if you could word it, or just read, in subdivisions or housing are located within so and so of each.
Well, they have it written in their bylaws, but you gotta have a sheriff that's gonna enforce the bylaws.
Well, that's true. And the sheriff can't really enforce the bylaws. You can even pass an ordinance, but they won't enforce the ordinance, and you still back the ground one.
Like I say, he's got plenty of other laws that he can use, though, and, um, I think several others are gonna talk to him about it. And, uh, if you can't get him to be a little more cooperative with the commissioner.
Well, and I said, this, this been, this was some time ago, I think. The whole, the whole situation might be handled differently now that it happened, so, uh, anyway. Because right now, I mean, relations with the sheriff are good, and we certainly wanna keep them that way.
Yep.
So, you know, if you feel, you know, you wanna have discussion, please go ahead, but, you know, right now, we're enjoying a good relationship, we certainly wanna keep it that way. So, uh, anyway, uh, I think, does that do it with the, yes?
I got one more thing, though, on this subject. Uh, are we getting any complaints?